of the council of the corporation of the municipality of central elgin it is monday august the 11th at one o'clock here in the council chambers as well as those who are joining us virtually online could i ask anyone in the in the gallery to please join us and stand for the national anthem thank you the municipality of central elgin acknowledges that it is located on the land of the maquis treaty that was signed by the waiandada and anishahi nations including ancestors of chippewas to the thames first nation it is also the traditional territory of the hadassani adawan duronk and mississauga nation these first nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters and municipality of central elgin council are there any disclosures of peculiar interest please seeing none if i could have a mover and a seconder for the adoption of the previous minutes please councillors bachman and connors thank you
mayor slone the motion reads moved by councillor bogman seconded by councillor connors that the minutes for the regular meeting of council dated june 16 2025 and special meeting of council dated june 23rd 2025 be adopted
questions or comments seeing none all those in favor opposed councillor graham are you on with us
I am on with you
okay um i think when we can't see you we call the vote is that right ms leach
yes that's correct i believe
okay any way you can turn on your camera
no sorry
okay if you could call the vote please
councillor graham
yes
councillor griffin
yes
councillor
yes
councillor connors
yes
councillor bogman
yes
deputy mayor noble
yes
mayor slone
yes
that's carried thank you
thank you moving into correspondence um requiring action proposed sidewalk on st george street a mover and a seconder please councillor watson and councillor connors thank you
mayor slone the motion reads moved by councillor watson seconded by councillor connors that the correspondence received in relation to the proposed sidewalk on st george street in linnhurst be referred to the county of elgin for review
questions or comments seeing none all those in favor opposed and that's carried thank you
sorry i think we're supposed to call that
councillor graham
sorry pardon me
councillor griffin
no
councillor watson
yes
councillor connors
yes
councillor bogman
yes
deputy mayor noble
yes
mayor slone
yes thank you
that's carried thank you
next item rail safety week letter from janet drivesdale mover in a seconder please councillor griffin and councillor watson thank you
mayor slone the motion reads moved by councillor griffin seconded by councillor watson that the municipality of central elgin support national rail safety week to be held from september 15th to 21st 2025
questions or comments all those in favor please call the vote
councillor graham
yes
councillor griffin
yes
councillor watson
yes
councillor connors
yes
councillor bogman
yes
deputy mayor noble
yes
mayor slone
yes
that's carried thank you
next on the agenda childcare worker and early childhood educator appreciation day a mover and a seconder please councillor griffin and councillor bachman thank you
mayor slone the motion reads moved by councillor griffin seconded by councillor bogman that october 21st 2025 be designated as the 25th annual childcare worker and early childhood education educator appreciation day in the municipality of central elgin in recognition of the education dedication and commitment of childcare workers to children their families and the quality of life of the community
questions or comments all those are call the vote please
councillor graham
yes
councillor griffin
yes
councillor watson
yes
councillor connors
yes
councillor bogman
yes
deputy mayor noble
yes
mayor slone
yes
that's carried
thank you um the next item is from the berry family hospice of elgin um correspondence to be received a mover and a seconder please deputy mayor councillor bachman thank you
mayor slone the motion reads moved by deputy mayor noble seconded by councillor bogman that the correspondence received from the berry family hospice of elgin dated july 25th 2025 be received for information
any questions or comments on this one seeing none if we could call the vote ms leach
councillor graham
yes
councillor griffin
yes
councillor watson
yes
councillor connors
yes
councillor bogman
yes
deputy mayor noble
yes
mayor slone
yes
that's carried
moving on to the report central elgin planning office cep 1925 a consent application for 396 edith cavell boulevard could i get a mover and a seconder please deputy mayor councillor watson thank you
mayor slone the motion reads moved by deputy mayor noble seconded by councillor watson that report cep 1925 regarding consent application 396 edith cavell boulevard be received for information and that consent application e 4625 be supported subject to the conditions as outlined and that support be provided to the county of elgin's land division committee for consideration
questions or comments from council seeing none ms leach if you could call the vote please
councillor graham
yes
councillor griffin
yes
councillor watson
yes
councillor connors
yes
councillor bogman
yes
deputy mayor noble
yes
mayor slone
yes
that's carried
cep 2025 an application to amend township of yarmouth bylaw uh concerning 8982 yarmouth center road a mover and a seconder please councillor watson councillor griffin thank you both
mayor slone the motion reads moved by councillor watson seconded by councillor griffin that reports cep 2025 regarding an application to amend the township of yarmouth bylaw number 1998 be received that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with legislated requirements
questions or comments from council please mr mcclure this is just for the public meeting that's what we're passing today sir
that is correct it's just advanced to a public meeting further questions on the amendment and the applicant will have the opportunity to provide input as well at that time
thank you sir anyone else oh deputy mayor
through you mayor what's the timeframe on that
essentially after this uh application if it's received then staff would schedule the public meeting for september if if that yeah
thank you anything else ms leach if you could call the vote please
councillor graham
yes
councillor griffin
yes
councillor watson
yes
councillor connors
yes
councillor bogman
yes
deputy mayor noble
yes
mayor slone
yes
that's carried thank you
moving on to the chief administrative officer cao 1424 if i could get a mover and a seconder please deputy mayor councillor griffin thank you
mayor slone the motion reads moved by deputy mayor noble seconded by councillor griffin that the records and information program work plan attached to schedule a to report cao 1425 be adopted and that bylaw 2025 39 be approved
any questions or comments on this item seeing none if you could call the vote please ms leach
councillor graham
yes
councillor griffin
yes
councillor watson
yes
councillor connors
yes
councillor bog
yes
deputy mayor noble
yes
mayor slone
yes
that's carried thank you
director of planning and engineering services memorandum specific to water tower line a mover and a seconder please deputy mayor councillor watson thank you
mayor slone the motion reads moved by deputy mayor noble seconded by councillor watson that the memorandum regarding water tower line be received for information
thank you any questions for engineering services on this one seeing none ms leach if you could call and record the vote
councillor graham
yes
councillor griffin
yes
councillor watson
yes
councillor connors
yes
councillor bogman
yes
deputy mayor noble
yes
mayor slone
yes
that's carried
dpe 0325 our request for tenders guide rail replacement mover and seconder please deputy mayor councillor watson thank you
mayor slone the motion reads moved by deputy mayor noble seconded by councillor watson that the tender from royal fens limited for the 2025 05 guide rail replacement in the amount of 164,640 plus hst be accepted
questions or comments all in favor ms leach if you could call and record the vote please
councillor graham
yes
councillor griffin
yes
councillor watson
yes
councillor connors
yes
councillor bog
yes
deputy mayor noble
yeah yes
mayor slone
yes
that's carried thank you
now to the director of public works and community services contract award tandem axle truck uh mover and a seconder to start discussion please deputy or councillor connors councillor watson thank you
mayor slone the motion reads moved by councillor connors that seconded by councillor watson that the tender submission from premier truck group in the amount of 436,845 plus hst be accepted and that additional funding in the amount of 74,534 dollars be funded from the roads and equipment reserve
um i have a question but i thought in advance i i was looking through um part of the snowplow is built in mexico with components from canada and the us that now face 25% tariffs the truck body is built in canada but it also relies on components sourced from the us and mexico again which are subject to the tariffs um council i don't know what your thoughts on this obviously we have a truck that was ordered when the economy was a bit more stable for 370,000 dollars and there's a an extra fee now and the and the amount of 74,000 i'll start the discussion with councillor griffin
thank you through you mr mayor um carrie and i spoke a little bit back around the initial round of threats of tariffs about bringing a motion about that i know a lot of municipalities had had motions requesting the provincial government to effectively indemnify municipalities for any sort of breach of usual procurement that would be necessary in order to favor canadian companies um i was wondering ms heard could you speak to whether there's been any clarification on what that looks like
mr jen soon i think will take do you have anything to add sir
through you mayor no i haven't not at this time
okay councillor your microphone
thank you through you so then we don't have a clear idea of whether there is anything problematic for us in our procurement if we favor canadian or is that something we can go forward with
ms heard
thank you through the mayor to councillor griffin i understand that the procurement um and the county has taken the lead on this with mfoa as well as with the procurement experts i haven't been in the loop recently about what their findings were that's why i referred that to mr jen soon
okay
so we can definitely look into um what's what the the latest comments are and and provide council with a response no problem
thanks overall we still have this contract to deal with um deputy mayor did you want to comment or anyone else
just speaking to that i don't know that there'd be a canadian only contractor that would be able to do that to avoid those tariffs i by the time you start putting large trucks together they bounce back and forth across multiple borders yeah so including this one i don't know that there'd be an option to try to re-tender that and um yeah i guess my question through you mayor is um is there an ability to maybe continue using our old truck until there's a little bit more stability uh with with tariffs
mr pigott you're our truck expert
thank you mayor slone the hardest part with this vehicle is it's it it's the reliability that's that's come into issue here we have a constant fleet replacement program in place so if we were to defer this cost here we're just going to be on a further backlog on this the other issue with the with truck procurements in in general is the tender today is is in front of you at 2025 we will not receive this vehicle until 2026 so we we still have to run this truck for for one more winter control season for for that and in and in our capital budget there we've spent close to or over eighty thousand dollars in in the four-year period and just maintenance and repairs on on this particular vehicle so it keeps driving our our costs up in in terms of the the operating costs and and the reliability because this is also one of our frontline service trucks that that works on on the county roads
thank you mr pigott our friends in the federal government talked about tariffs and counter tariffs um i guess there's no mechanism for compensation should the tariff be applied to a certain business i mean i i get your point if we wait now we have to go further there is some instability but this instability the tariffs might be twenty fifty percent next year right so i don't know i'm a if council has any further comments i'm i'm glad to oh sorry thank you councillor graham
had two questions so mr pigott is that eighty thousand dollars of labor and parts when we have three mechanics on duty or is it eighty thousand dollars in parts over the last four years and the second question is did staff look into the possibility of having a canadian provider for this
just before mr pigott answers the canadian provider the truck is a canadian made vehicle so it's the afterwork that gets done and it's back and forth the border and maybe you just want to hit on that thanks mr pigott
yeah so the costs there that were included in the in the budget that includes the labor costs it's parts materials and and labor um as for the the truck heavy truck business as as you remember um st thomas was home to the sterling truck factory and there was one in chatham the navistar plant those those facilities are no longer here in in canada the the heavy truck businesses is primarily built in the us and and mexico again like you said the the part component of it is all over north america for for those particular components the body here is is built in in mount forest so as a canadian company but similar there's a part sourced all over north america that are subject to to tariffs
thank you mr pigott and just before we go and having worked in the steel business the steel would have probably come from hamilton gets moved back forth back forth frame frames some built in st thomas some built in the us so that's why it's such a difficult uh concern for so many in ontario with with the consideration of tariffs councillor bachman
although i try to understand and grasp what's going on with the united states it's getting more and more difficult all the time um this is our new reality this is something we're gonna have to face i don't personally speaking i don't see any of this resolving in our time that we're on council uh i don't see a resolution a a simple resolution with the current political situations we find ourselves in um i would i would be in favor of moving forward just to get it done before anything else happens or or what else could come down the line um i would say this is just our new reality uh we accept the position we're in and we just move forward
thank you sir councillor connors please
through you mayor to mr pigott um i wonder if we've looked at i mean i know we have three full-time mechanics on in our you know in our employ is there any appetite to bring the parts in bring the truck in bring the parts in and ship them from wherever have them land here in central elgin and have our mechanics install
for clarification i mean clarification oh it's sort of if tell me if i'm wrong here the chassis would be purchased and then all the additions for a snowplow are done by another thing but i'll pass to you
no that's not an option that we we could do because the as part of the the snowplow tendering process there the each chassis so there's several different manufacturers of chassis that are that are out there they have to meet the requirements for the for the snow equipment as well so there's components that that work back and forth so there is a bit of engineering and and design in terms of sizing of the of the the different components the brake chambers the the rear end the axles transmission sizing and and our staff their mechanics they can they can build things and fix things plus the the staffing time to to do that we don't have that that capability to to do that we don't even have the hoist and lifts to be able to to build a truck
thanks mr pigott deputy mayor please
through you mayor to mr pigott um what's our reliability on that truck if we were to put a couple dollars into it or anticipated uh cost not anticipated cost but anticipated needed repairs to get that through another year to make it reliable do you have a kind of an idea
sir
no i i don't
thank you i have councillor graham it looks like with her hand up if it's
yeah mr pigott i'm just wondering when you said it was labors and parts for that eighty thousand dollars do you have a dissemination of how much it was just for the parts since the the mechanics are actually paid anyway
no i don't it was just going off the information that was included in the background sheet that was provided in the 2025 capital budget
okay i would like to i would like to see that you know what its cost in the past four years just for parts and the potential for what it would possibly cost keeping it for another year before we move ahead with a a tender that's over budgeted amount
uh thank you we did approve this in the budget um so the council voted on the budget it was in the budget um i know we've come back now with the with with a little bit more so i'm not sure what investigation we should go into any other thoughts and questions from the council on what next steps might look like councillor watson
yeah through you mayor to mr pigott um is there any way we could contract out snowplowing for one truck um you need to you oh okay well then the other question is i don't like having to pay an extra amount of money oh oh um because we're we're told that's just the way things are um i don't know why we don't try and get our elbows up and we have to send a message that hey we don't need it right now we'll make do we all have to sacrifice maybe a little bit um but to be held hostage here a little bit things could change and i'd like to maybe see what could play down the road here a little bit yet um could we still have a truck on order at around our budget that we want to take um i i don't know if we can do that or not but uh i i just don't support taking this truck right now i think we got to send a message to everybody out there that we're looking after their best interests
thank you appreciate that i'll let mr pigott and ms heard i mean there's obviously for the potential to rent a truck but as to mr pigott's comment we're in the order process now we're to take it for 26 so i guess there's two sides to discussion and happy to 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 get answers for councillor watson's questions from either of you so i don't know who who's up first
through you mayor slone the rental business for trucks especially on snowplows because there's the customized units the the pre-wetting components on them the again the the size it's it's meant to it to handle the route that it that it's going on to so the service requirements for that so the the tender is is built around that plus the the requirements too for standardizing in in the fleet we try to keep components as as standard as possible for the for the mechanics in terms of parts availability and and supply and also the operators to to operate the the equipment
thank you ms heard did you want to follow up
thank you through yourself and and should council choose for us to look into um if renting a vehicle is is available for 2026 we can take that back and you you could defer this report until we have that response that's an option as well we do want to caution just as mayor slone did say that although it's seventy four thousand dollars again we run the risk of it being more in the future as well recognizing that there's always risk in whichever choice we make
thank you deputy mayor please
just one other thought too is um when you look at this we're not going to get this truck until next summer so keep in mind when we're looking at this uh that old truck that we're replacing we're going to still run that for this winter so we still have whatever costs we have we're not just extending that for one year we're actually extending that that old truck for two years because we're already going to be this winter with that truck so when we're looking at that i know it's nobody wants to spend an extra seventy four thousand five hundred and thirty four dollars but um keep in mind that we're not getting that until next winter season
councillor connors please
through you mayor just one further point or one further question uh when we dispose of the current truck is there any kind of money we would would receive by disposing of that truck to offset the seventy four thousand
through the councillor yes that is included in in the tender the 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 trade-in value of of the vehicle
so it looks like if the if it fails this vote um we're going to be back to square one and get more information from staff if we give direction to do that so i'm not sure if we go forward with how this is right now
just a couple just a couple last questions here
go ahead
uh so i agree with with councillor um watson that i think we should be delaying this or getting more information but to the mayor's question of what further investigations are needed i think we would need to know what the cost of any additional parts would be if we maintain this vehicle for the next year um without ordering at this extended price and as well there is the risk of it being less money you can say that there's the risk of it being more next year but there's also the risk of it or not the risk the benefit of it possibly being less as well and following following within the budgeted amounts not the additional seventy five thousand just points for consideration there
thank you so we are maintaining this vehicle regardless for the next year at least correct mr pigott
yes mayor slone we have to keep it on the on the road it it is part of the the fleet complement
perfect thanks council what is the well what would you like to do shall we vote on this and with an addendum do you want to go around first and see what whether this maybe there's the votes to to purchase as as is okay can i we'll just we'll just call the vote
councillor graham
no
councillor griffin
yes
councillor watson
no
councillor connors
sorry
yes
councillor bogman
yes
deputy mayor noble
yes
mayor slone Mayor Sloan?
No.
That's carried. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks, Elgin Distribution System Inspection. Mover in a second or please. Deputy Mayor, Counselor Connors.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation and Parks, Central Elgin Distribution System Inspection Report be received.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, if you could call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried. Thank you.
PWC 0425, Ministry of Citizenship and Multiculturalism, request. Mover in a second or please. Counselor, Deputy Mayor, and Counselor Griffin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Griffin, that additional funding in the amount of $24,095 plus HST for an archaeological assessment and built heritage resources be funded through development charges.
Any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor?
Through you, Mayor. Is this something new that we're seeing where we have to do archaeological studies on basically roadways?
Mr. Brooks, please.
Through you, Mayor Sloan. In our experience, it's not common for a request such as this to be done on a, on a built right-of-way. Typically, we consider those built right-of-ways as being already disturbed ground. So this one kind of came out of sort of left field. You know, we, we did get back to the ministry and, you know, plead our case that it's, you know, most of that ground has already been disturbed. However, they insisted on undertaking this additional study.
Thank you. Deputy?
Through you, Mayor. I find this challenging. Like, we just had the very long discussion about spending an extra $74,000 on a, on a snowplow truck. Now we're looking at an extra $25,000. Almost seems like there's some deliberate actions to cost us more money.
Counselor Graham?
Through you, Mayor. Mr. Brooks, did they tell us why they're requesting it?
Uh, no, they did not explain, give us a thorough explanation on why they would be requesting this one.
I have Counselor Griffin and Ms. Hurd wants to comment, please.
Thank you. Through you. I was equally frustrated when I read that, that even though this land has been dug up, we're being asked to do it. But I just want to extend my thanks for staff having taken the time to push back and try to save if it were possible.
Ms. Hurd, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Through yourself to council. Please remember that this cost would be included with the next development charges study, so it wouldn't be borne by the taxpayer. It would be borne by the future development.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if you could call the vote, please, Ms. Leach.
Counselor Graham?
No.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried. Thank you.
PWCS 0525, renewal off-leash dog park. I'm told there's an addendum to be made and that Mr. Wigsell will be coming forward and explaining the changes to us. Welcome, Mike. Nice to have you here.
Yes. So it was a misinterpretation of some data that was provided to me. So with the more current data, I was able to make that revision and so it stands as it is right now. So $12,000 rather than $800 a year, it's now $12,000 a year. And I was able to substantiate that through the actuals of 2024.
Any questions or comments? I'll need a mover in a second for this one. I had in my notes your name before my calling the vote. So Deputy Mayor will move and Counselor Connors will second. Thanks, Mike.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute a tri-party agreement with Kettle Creek Conservation Authority and the City of St. Thomas for the continued operation of the off-leash dog park at Dan Patterson Conservation Area as attached as Appendix A to Staff Report, PWCS 525.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, if you could call the vote, please, Ms. Leach.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried. Thank you.
Into bylaws. Could I get a mover in a second or please? Deputy Mayor, Counselor Connors?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that bylaw 202531 be read a third time and passed.
If you could call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried. Thank you.
If I could get a mover in a second or the bylaw 2025 will be read a first and second time, please. Counselor Watson, Counselor Bachman, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that bylaw 202541 be read a first and second time.
If you could call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried.
Third and final, could I get a mover in a second or please? Deputy Mayor, Counselor Bachman, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that bylaws 202539, 40, and 42 be read a first time and passed.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried.
Great. Moving forward, motions and notice of motion, municipal act, sorry, notice of motion, one, Municipal Accountability Act. Counselor Griffin, do you have a second?
Not yet.
Counselor Bachman.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Griffin, seconded by Counselor Bachman, therefore be it resolved that council formally support the principles of Bill Nine and province-wide standardization of codes of conduct, but recommend that removal of a councillor not be subject to a council vote. Instead, the decision should be made by an independent board to prevent politicization and ensure fairness, and be it further resolved that the position be circulated to Premier Doug Ford, to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, and made available to the public.
Questions or comments? Do we speak to this? Counselor Griffin, please.
Sure. Thank you so much. So I think the motion more or less is self-explanatory in its clauses at the top there, but the reason, there were two reasons that I feel this is important. And one is the clarity of the matter that council has to speak together on things. We can't have one person go and purport to speak and it be misunderstood. And I was worried that it's very likely that anything that was said at the Bill Nine hearing may have been misunderstood because there were statements saying, we appreciate the opportunity, we feel, we ask, et cetera. So it's very logical that it would be understood as a Central Elgin policy or stance. And the other reason that I was concerned about this specifically is because twice there was very specific reference made to Eridan Burles, our former integrity commissioner. And I would not want anyone to have a misunderstanding that any opinion that was held about an organization that we've had contracts with and worked with spoke for the whole of the municipality if it did not. So I think it's relevant for us to take a stance, even if it's very similar to the stance that was already projected, and to formally publish that and make sure that we're clear.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments? If you could please recall and record the vote.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
No.
Counselor Connors?
No.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
No.
Mayor Sloan?
No.
That's defeated.
And we have another notice of motion, public transit. Counselor Griffin, do you have a second for this one? Okay. Counselor Bachman? Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Griffin, seconded by Counselor Bachman, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the municipality of Central Elgin directs staff to bring a report to council exploring options for public transit between St. Thomas and Port Stanley via Sunset Road. And further, that the report should include but not be limited to a service sharing with St. Thomas, year-round on-demand transit, and increased frequency summertime transit.
Thank you, Ms. Leach. Any questions or comments? Counselor Griffin, please.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Sloan. I think that this is an opportunity for us to explore something that would facilitate our tourism as well as accessibility for our community at the same time. And my understanding from conversation with Mayor Preston is that he's kind of excited about the idea as well. So I hope that if we can get a report and some options, that we can decide whether that's something we can offer. I do know from the feedback I've received from the public that there are an awful lot of people that wish it could be a train, but we do not own the train in Port Stanley. And overwhelmingly, regardless of whether it is a train or a bus, it's been very positive talking with people about the possibility of transit in general.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if you could please call and record the vote, please, Ms. Leach.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
No.
Counselor Connors?
No.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
No.
Mayor Sloan?
Oops, sorry. No.
That's defeated.
I have to vacate the chair for our next motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Mayor Sloan. Do you have a second?
Counselor.
Mayor Sloan, did you want to speak to this?
The decision we had bring for, was brought forward last time was from.
Okay, so we need to speak to the reconsideration motion first? Okay.
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by Mayor Sloan, seconded by Counselor Watson, that the council decision dated June 16th, 2025, regarding the investment of the $10,532,000 held with the Bank of Montreal in a three-year GIC, as outlined in Report DFS 525, investment summary and renewal proposals be reconsidered.
Okay. Any questions? Counselor Griffin?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. When I first read this motion, I thought that it might not be a possible reconsideration because the original motion asked for this investment to be done at the start of July. And I thought that if that were already the case, we really might not be able to change our course of action. But when I spoke to Mr. Jan Soon, I found that actually it never was invested. And that was because very shortly after our last vote, Mayor Sloan had said to him that he wasn't happy with it and wanted to come back and reconsider. And as I already said, speaking about Bill Nine, my concern is that a council needs to speak as a council, not as one person. So if you have a council decision not acted on in the timeline that's given and held off for a month and a half, because one member of that council of seven has made a decision about what they'd like to see, I mean, there comes a point where by precedent, what our staff should be doing is holding off a couple of months on every decision that we make because they might be waiting for one voice to say, actually, they'd like to override it. And that's not really an effective way for us to get things done. So I think that in principle, we should not be reconsidering this. We should be moving forward as our council decided.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, Counselor Graham, you had a question?
I do have a question. I just want to verify that because my understanding was that it was supposed to happen in July. So to Mr. Jan Soon, was this investment not done based on something that one council member directed?
Mr. Jan Soon?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that's correct.
So just, just from my full understanding here, we as a council decided and gave direction for this money to be invested in a specific way. Staff did not carry this out based upon one council member overriding the rest of council's decision. Is that correct?
Who are you directing the question to?
Staff that would have made that decision, whether it's the CAO or Mr. Jan Soon?
Mr. Jan Soon?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Can we, Ms. Leach, call the vote?
Counselor Graham?
No.
Counselor Griffin?
No.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
No.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried.
Can I get a mover and second for the reconsideration motion? Mayor Sloan, second. Counselor Watson?
Deputy Mayor Noble, the motion reads, moved by Mayor Sloan, seconded by Counselor Watson, that the $10,532,000 held with the Bank of Montreal boundary adjustment compensation be reinvested in a one-year GIC at the higher of market rate or negotiated rate.
Okay. Questions? Mayor Sloan?
I'll just comment that without, you know, I'm not going to open session, talk about the difference between a one and a three-year. There's some consideration that we might need the money before if it was locked in at one year versus three years. So when I requested that there be consideration of one year given, I asked what the specifics were on how that happens. And I was told it would have to come back to the meeting. It's come back to the meeting. So you've got the reconsideration motion. There was an interest that we might need to have some money on hands before the year was out. That's why I brought it forward. If the council wants to vote it down and keep to three years, so be it. That's my, you know, you've got, you can hope that when we're dealing with certain things that haven't been discussed and open pertaining to anything, to contracts, to the across the street at the former psychiatric hospital lands. The question I had was whether or not we should be pragmatic by having access to the money. There's no difference really in the interest. It's, it's, it's something that advice was given that it might be good to have it. If not, we don't need to. We'll pay the break fee if we need it and vote it through for three years. So that's my suggestion.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan. Makes sense to me. Does anybody else have questions? Okay. Ms. Leach?
Counselor Graham?
No.
Counselor Griffin?
No.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried. Thank you.
If I could get a mover in a second or to go into close, please. Deputy Mayor, Counselor Watson, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson, that council proceed into closed session at 1:47 PM in order to address a matter pertaining to advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, labor relations or employee relations, a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality, the security of the property of the municipality or local board.
All those in favor? Call the vote, please.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bachman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?